Text me when you're done, so I can take you guys off live.
You got it. Absolutely. Thanks for that.
Excellent. Okay, great. Thanks for me and thanks Bill for getting us in.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cool.
We're only two minutes off. Okay, so um I'd like to uh call the planning board meeting to order, announce that we are um our meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded.
Cool.
Um we now have name tags, so I don't need to introduce everybody, but we are all here tonight except our alternate Erica Depp. Um we do have a quorum, and we start with public comments, but I public comments are not from presenters, so if you have anybody online, I guess they can still come online, right?
Yeah, we are hooked up to Zoom from when.
Nobody wants us, right? Okay, we if anybody comes in, we have a second public uh session at the end.
No one wants us.
Minutes, we need to take a few minutes to talk a minute to talk about minutes, because we're about six weeks behind now, or six sets of minutes behind or something.
Yeah.
So I ask our and we we've lost Andrea somehow, so we need a a a strategy, so what have you been able to figure out?
So I talked to the town administrator today, and he is okay with me uh doing them from home in my spare time to get caught up. So I will be taking that on. It'll be paid from the account that she was gonna be paid from, so I'll get this all caught up.
Okay. So it's reasonable pay?
It's my my hourly.
Okay.
Or good.
So no, it's not.
We've got time to have for weekends or uh well, okay, so our what I wanna see, I think we made it through the be through the middle of March perhaps?
He said it. Nope, we are like into April. We have about six or s- we have seven, so five, six is where I'm gonna start off.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I told her to do the last meeting if it's a meeting week, right? She could only do it every other weekend.
Yeah, it's when I have my kids.
Cause she doesn't have the kids. So to do our most recent, so we're always current, and to pick up one back when in a few months we'll be caught up. That's it. Okay, so action items. First on our agenda is um Alex Zozak, did I say your name right?
Zok, yeah, don't yeah, don't pronounce yes.
Zok. No, okay, Zok. Um and this was on your, I think if you come up here.
Oh, we come up.
And people can take a look.
Okay.
Uh because it's really, really small on the on the Chromebooks, but I had questions which he resolved for me. So I told him, I'm a box checker, and I went through the the list, and I had questions, but he answered them. So you can you can.
I tried.
No, 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 he did. He he was good. The main one of the main questions is that our data is the um the data on access GIS and the assessors' records are out of date. So I thought one owner was wrong, and that's not the case, so.
I believe they bought it like uh beginning of the year, something like that.
So you could tell them the plan there, and then we'll go through the checklist.
Well, you want me to like, I mean, you got.
No, that's fine. Well, he doesn't mind me touching them here.
Well, I don't.
You can touch them anytime, Bill.
I'll sign them.
He'll watch me anytime, Bill.
Okay, just so everyone could see it, that's all.
That's all right, no.
Okay.
Um basically, Mi- Mr. Morse is selling a small wedge to uh Mr. McAdams for his for his dogs. To put like a little dog kennel or something, fence in an area. Um simple as that, just a j- not a building lot, it's just gonna be annexed with uh Mr. McAdams' existing land. The remaining land of Mr. Morse is, as you can see, it's just over four acres and over over two hundred feet of frontage. And this is all field right here. Um there might be some wetlands back here, but the all this is all field.
This is where Hybridge Hybridge Road dead ends.
Yeah, the train tracks are right here.
At the train tracks, so it's the very end of Hybridge Road.
Mm-hmm. It's it's the last house in there, yeah.
So um we'll go we'll go through these, and then I don't know, people can ask questions at the end, but the checklist, you can point them, okay? So we got the northbound, North Point, Dayton Scale. Go ahead, point them out for us.
Oh, me? Okay. North Arrow, Scale, Dates in the title block.
It's back back in June, you've been working on this a while. Okay, and then we have the owner and the book and page registry for both land pieces, right?
Yes, yep.
Um we have the area of each lot, this was a question I asked him, is why don't we have the area of Mr.
McAdams.
McAdams lot, but he but what he says makes sense is that the reason you give the area is to make sure to show that you're not creating any undersized lot. So hence, this one with the four ten acres is labeled, and the other one does have a house on it, and it is a non-conforming lot. It's only an acre, a little over an acre, but it's been there. I mean, it's a legitimately non-conforming lot, so you're not making it more non-conforming.
Yep, right.
So he doesn't need to put the house on it, so that's where I got lost. So that's the area of each lot, but it means it it doesn't mean if you're adding to a non-conforming.
You know, you know, we kinda interpret that as, you know, area of the lot, you know, the property that's affected by whatever's whatever's going on.
By that.
I mean, is Mr. McAdams getting affected? Well, I I guess in sense, he's he's gaining a piece of pie, but I mean.
He's he's gaining sixty-one hundred and eighty-two square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
But his lot is not being made more non-conforming.
Correct, correct. It's not coming out of his lot.
Right.
Right. Okay, so um. Yeah, data determine, location, direction, length of every streetway, lot line and boundary, I think all there, that's all there. Um where practical, boundary lines of contiguous and adjacent land, and names of owners. There's only one that we've got the Boston Railroad.
Yeah, the railroad, yeah.
Yeah, and otherwise across the street. Location of permanent monuments, you got a lot of monuments on there. Um location of names, names and present with non-private ways, we don't have any private ways. Suitable space to record our signatures, which is there. Zoning classification, I saw that somewhere.
Right there.
Um. And the creation of a of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage, which he has there both in his note and written there. And location of all existing buildings, that was another question I had, but again, it's only on the affected lot.
Yeah, house forty-one.
So in fact, there is a two-family on that on McAdams' lot that he's owned.
McAdams, yeah.
McAdams, which he's owned for a long time. Um and we didn't, the the side yard and setback are nowhere near close, if you look at his scale to the house remaining, so it's not important that he put it on. Wetlands, he didn't, he chose instead to put the minimum land contains the minimum required upland area, which I missed that too. So, questions for him?
I'm all set.
If not, um why don't we set up, what you want signed there, and we'll circle around.
Oh, oh, you guys sign all all paper instead?
Well, we usually do sign.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion. We do. I mean, I mean, the signing is the, yeah, go ahead, take a motion. I'll take a motion.
I'll second Bill's motion.
Go in favor of approving the James M. Morse Plan presented?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, well, just line them up, and we'll walk around and some.
Yeah, yeah, they were all, they've rolled up for a while, so kinda roll them backwards for a second, kinda unkink them.
Oh, you're trying to all range them.
Do we have a, sure, you do, bro, even the paper ones you wanna?
The paper ones we don't need, but this one we need for the MyLag.
That one's for the MyLag, yes.
Okay. Okay, seven in a row.
I'll work on it, okay?
How many are we gonna sign?
Usually, usually just sign one of the paper copies for our office, and then one, yeah, one for, yeah.
One in the MyLag. Okay, what's our date is August fifth?
So only one of these?
We usually keep one for office, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I should have used that first.
No, no, it doesn't matter. Okay. Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Done?
You're busy.
Yeah, I'll bet a high.
Um you guys keep these.
Yep, that's yours.
And I can take, I did your job.
Do we need all of them? Do you all wanna take one back?
Do you want a paper copy or you got, yeah, you got it, your data.
No, I don't need.
For your, sure.
Cause I can, I mean, what ones get recorded, I think it's pretty, I can just.
Yeah, for your client, okay. I broke your elastic, do you want me to tie it back up?
Please.
It'll be fifty dollars.
Please, cause I usually have one on my wrist, and I don't have them, so.
There you go, just be gentle.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for.
Yeah, bye-bye. Yeah.
Um, okay, so we told Mr. Furman, seven? What'd you tell him?
Yep, for seven, so seven.
So seven, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to give you, giving you to do your presentation in fifteen minutes?
Oh, definitely.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna have Jonathan Bosses from M- here from MRPC for the long-awaited open space and recreation chapter, and the reason we didn't have it earlier was because of some computer glitch. So he made you a paper, made us all a paper copy.
Uh this is uh this is an early draft, this will go through several revisions, this is mainly narrative currently. And it draws in large part from the uh o- the updated open space plan from twenty nineteen, so as it gets updated, that when there are numbers there, hopefully they'll reflect the most current ones. Get some feedback. Uh it starts with an introduction, uh just um going over uh what open space is, and uh what open space and recreation opportunities provide to the community. And then it explains where a significant portion of this narrative information was taken from, the twenty nineteen updated open space and recreation plan in this case. And also that it will incorporate results from uh surveys of the town, uh one that MRPC did in June, will also have the results incorporated as it gets further in development. Uh then it moves on to the next section, which is the importance of open space protection. Um a lot of this is pretty standard boilerplate. Um it just goes over why open land is pre- um is important, why it should be protected, uh talks about the economic costs, uh preservation has natural and social and psychological benefits. And uh also, you know, the community's desire to protect, maintain, and diversify open space according to the community's character and residents', you know, desires.
Mm, Madam Chair, if, uh would you like us to ask questions, or may I ask a question?
Um, um. Yeah, absolutely.
Uh when you go through and list the activities, um if you don't uh know this mountain biking, uh whereas there are mountain bike trails present in the town.
Yes, uh that. Yeah, that is uh in large part because I wanna try to capture, you know, a lot of the activities that are, you know, provided by organizations in the community, which there's been an interruption of over the last year, so hopefully uh going forward in the drafts, we can incorporate more of those, and I'll also be um just including standard activities, mountain biking, fishing, hunting in areas that permit it. Um and I'll also mention, you know, some activities, recreational activities that aren't allowed, which would be like ATB, and just motorized vehicles on off-road locations, you know, conservation lands especially.
Well, even some of the activities you listed there, because of what's going on with the watershed and the advisory committee, m- many of those aren't, well, mountain biking is actually a a good example.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
In uh in the watershed lands, it's not currently allowed.
Yep.
Uh whereas uh the majority of other public access, uh other user groups are given public access.
Yep.
Um and that's something which is possibly affecting the town in the long term.
All right, that sounds like an excellent thing to do, please. I will make note of that right now.
You could add, get ice fishing as well, seems to be popular here.
I will include that with fishing.
Yes. It's certainly poor season fishing.
Yeah, yeah, fishing as well, right.
And uh it will also address uh recent uh history of community accomplishments, uh which I wanna pull from the most up-to-date information, so that'll be going to further revisions. But I can also include noted items from the updated twenty nineteen plan as well. Um just talking about uh the basket, I believe the basketball court, and some of the uh the timber harvesting going into the community fund and everything, which are already noted, but should probably also be included in just the chapter element as well. Uh a significant portion of this chapter continues on to address community setting with the surroundings of Hubbardston, landscape character, uh significant portion deals with water resources. And the watershed, along with wetlands and aquifer recharge areas, just because it's an essential part of Hubbardston, you can't avoid it. Continues on to address vegetation, wildlife, uh public shade trees, and scenic landscapes. And it also makes uh mention of unique environments, um lists a couple of the scenic vistas. There's a possibility to include a more expanded description of scenic roads, uh along with that.
Did you say scenic roads? Are you referring to the official scenic roads?
Yes.
Okay.
And after examining unique features, it moves on to open space uh and recreation assets. Um these I will be expanding further with, you know, uh as as it goes through a couple rounds of edits and drafts. Uh but it's gonna be broken down by private parcels and public and nonprofit parcels, um which will also be addressed with the significant majority of the town that falls under conservation land owned by the DCR, which is mentioned. And then uh possibly including uh just a brief table of the major parcels of land that and what uh ownership they fall under, or if they fall under um permanent protection, uh non-permanent protection, or um any other type of, you know, classification, that's uh important to note.
Quick question for you.
Yep.
Um would this also include like a ref- reference to our big playing fields?
Uh.
As recreation?
Yes, uh.
Okay, cause you need to, we have very nice recreation fields, and.
Just mentioned at the top of page nine.
It is? Well, I haven't read this, so.
Yeah.
Curtis Recreation.
Recre- oh Curtis Recreation, okay, and also then um one of the things we did as well as that protected land was we approved a new playground that's part of the Curtis Field.
I will.
A a big new playground.
That'll get built someday.
I know.
But it's been approved?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that will.
Hey, we got a temporary free permit for the ice cream truck for opening day, so.
I'll include that as a note with the Curtis Recreation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it should be, should be awesome.
It's rebuilt playground totally, it's much improved.
Yeah. All right, and then uh it moves on to analysis of needs. Um with the open space, talks about the pressures it's facing from growing uh urban populations with the Boston, and also with the Worcester metropolitan um surplus expanding, and Hubbardston's role as a rural kind of um bed community, as it were, and the pressures of development it could face being on the edge of that. And then recreation, um uh does not go into significant detail right now, I'd like to include um just a kind of a list of organized activities uh pres- that all members of the town participate in, and who kind of runs them. But it uh does talk about um just opportunities that are available, and some um allowances of activities that currently exist.
So I have a a question going back to the um the analysis of need of open space section.
Yep.
Um I'm trying to remember the numbers, they were from a report that was from like two thousand eleven or so, it was the housing, I think it was the housing report from two thousand eleven. Uh it commented that the percentage of space in Hubbardston that was actually buildable was in single digits. Um whereas when when I look at this, it's saying, well, one-third of the land is neither developed nor conserved. It it appears to be a a very different picture than what appeared in those reports.
That was in reference to some of the notes about uh prime agricultural land that's at risk of falling out of use, which if that does happen, could be um developed as it's not currently protected. But I can uh make that definitely more clear, and that's probably not the best word to put it, so I will address that with. Thank you for that. All right. Um and that kind of finishes up the current analysis of needs, and then the goals and actions is almost wholly unchanged from the um twenty nineteen update. The only item that has been removed is continuing to develop the master plan with MRPC, as that is currently being wrapped up with this chapter, and then the implementation chapter to come.
Okay. So in in terms of just in general thoughts around open space, so.
Yeah.
We have, and and don't quote me on the number, but it was what, forty, forty-five percent of the town is currently held by DCR or otherwise controlled?
Well, last time I looked at uh open space map publishing, it was, I believe it was almost forty percent, but that could be slight off, but yeah.
So one of the things that I see as, well frankly, as a barrier to development of the town is that, and obviously that land is currently held set aside for water resources.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
But that doesn't mean it couldn't have value to the town in other ways, such as uh clearer rules for trail access, or perhaps um mountain bike trail access, or uh or further development for recreational use that way. And that that's an opportunity that we're missing out on as a town, given the the fact that, well, we can't really grow through development, that's that's not an option for us. But we can grow through how we optimize the usage of land that we currently have in the town, and right now that land is subject to draconian restrictions that aren't necessarily based on science, such as um some of the positions related to the environmental impact of dogs or mountain biking, or uh or those things.
Could work on restrictions on recreational activities with state-controlled land.
Have you seen any any other towns that have actually done something like that?
Um.
With similar land?
Yeah, there there are lots of models of towns that have had uh economic development through either trail development or expansion specifically for mountain biking.
Oh, awesome.
Like the the entire northeast kingdom of Vermont is a a really good example of that, although that's on the scope below past.
Uh the the mass rail trail program is also getting a lot of, you know, a lot of support.
Oh, yeah, a lot of people, uh.
Especially out in this this area especially, there's a push to expand that, so
Yeah.
kind of following with that thought of making use of the land that's already there and already has a lot of these recreational, you know, foundations laid out. Uh that's definitely a action item and a goal that can be incorporated along with that.
My biggest question on that, that I was thinking of, is DCR open to that?
Well, there is a there is a, to the best of my knowledge, there is a public plan that's been on hold for the last year or two, uh that was gonna allow, I believe, point-to-point mountain biking, but that's still been kept on hold.
Right.
Uh de- despite um despite the fact that it's been there for a while, and that every other access group, every other user group is granted access.
Well.
Whereas uh mountain biking specifically has been singled out, um despite the fact that the local advocacy organizations have provided uh peer-reviewed published works on the environmental impact.
And we can definitely incorporate that into, you know, goals recommendations, and also within the analysis of needs, take advantage of recreational opportunities that are there that are currently restricted because of uh state mandates. Um and that plays into a couple different goals, so that can be uh incorporated into both of those action items. Uh one with goal seven with the communication with state agencies and legislatures, uh with, you know, developing either, you know, a continuous point of contact in order to maintain clear dialogue, and then also possibly with uh trail and open space land improvement and townwide improvements to increase recreational opportunities. So it can be included in a couple different uh goals as, you know, action items and priorities, definitely.
Other comments? I got a couple comments, but I don't, maybe I've done. Resource. Oh, one one of which is add birding.
All right.
Because we have very active bird groups, and we work hard at trying to like not have the hayfields harvested too soon, because it kills all the bobolinks.
Right.
So if you add birding, and it gives us a pit, a little little uh effort in that point, and I just wanted to tell the group, um before the meeting started, and we had a few minutes. I told them also, you know, the recycling center is closed, which means that the trash is gonna pile up in all our open spaces in areas. So I think you should put in as a goal, you know, to work on reopening recycling center to prevent the trashing of our wildlands.
That falls right within the the land, land protection and townwide improvements, so that's definitely doable.
Yeah, so let's put it right in there, and the other thing is, um last thing, is where you have action six is advocate for adoptive town bylaws and encourage environmentally friendly green development. If you could put in there such as um uh cluster zoning, or I mean, we have a little of that, but.
Yep.
As well as like.
I guess.
Cause I hear green, uh green codes, I think a bit is.
And that lines up with the the housing chapter as well, so perfect.
Great. Great. Wait, she's gonna send these to us, you're gonna send electronic copy?
I'm gonna send an electronic copy out to Mallory, and then that's gonna happen tonight, and then she can distribute that to you, uh to review, absolutely destroy. Uh and then send back to me, and I'll do my best to incorporate all of the all of comments and feedback, and whatever improvement you wanna focus on.
Suggestion, everybody, send your comments to Mallory, and she'll bundle them together.
Okay.
And send them off to Jonathan, okay? As a group, all right, and she can work on the redundancies and stuff, but anyway, we thank you very much, and we come to the town, we're very uh happy to see you.
Just thank you.
It seems odd to see people in person here.
You're doing map sections too, right?
Uh yeah, map sections uh will be included, I didn't include them in this, cause this primarily just merit and narrative right now, and
Yeah, yeah.
there hasn't been any real change in the open space uh map, or the Land use maps, I would say.
Except the addition of the new farm land.
Yep, which I will uh bring to a GIS person and incorporate that in a open space map.
Right. Great. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
So our next item of business is.
We have VHB on Zoom ready to go, so.
VHB ready to go, everybody's there?
I'm just towards.
We got John Furman, or do we have a?
Yeah. We have John, Paige, and Catherine.
Oh.
And all three of us.
Trio, and uh also David, right?
Yep, David is in here, so.
Okay. All right. You tell us.
So I'm bringing here.
Do we have one of you that wants to lead off? Or I g- I guess I should say for the public, this is a presentation of uh environmental study that we had conducted on a gravel pit owned by the town uh for many years, and it's about fifteen acres, is it? And it's suitability as a site for affordable housing, and particularly affordable senior housing. So this is the environmental, chapter two, part of the study. And these are the folks from VHB, and then you can introduce yourself, who's ever gonna jump on first.
Sure, so I'll hop on first, my name is Paige Cornell, I'm part of the site investigation or mediation group here at VHB. So I'll just give a little bit of background. Uh for lot fifty-seven, we started with a phase one environmental site assessment, where we identified two primary concerns on lot fifty-seven. Uh one of which was that there was a shooting range in the northern portion of the site, and then also the disposal of street sweepstakes in the western portion of the site. So based on these concerns that we identified, we recommended a phase two environmental site assessment, which includes a subsurface assessment. So we collected soil samples and the burn, as well as around the stockpiles. And then based off the a- local results from that, we identified lead uh above Massachusetts reportable concentrations. So that represents a hundred and twenty-day reportable condition. Um and then we did not identify anything above reportable concentrations within the stockpiles, but we would recommend those be removed in accordance with the mast EP guidance. And so I can defer to Katie now, so Katie's in LSP, and she can provide a little bit more background insight into the reporting condition that we identified related to the lead, as well as some potential remediation options. Fair, fair. Um so I'm Katie Kuzma, and I am also with the Site Investigation and Reation Group at VHB, and as Kate showed, I'm in LSP. Um so I guess I just wanted to open the the floor to questions about the results, or if you had any other questions about what just what Paige just summarized first.
I have a question, which is who's responsible for the lead, for sign sending the notification within the hundred and twenty days? If the land's owned by the town, would that be the town administrator, cause he's on board with us here tonight?
Right, so the current owner or operator of the property itself would be responsible for filing a release notification form?
Okay, and that form you can provide to, Mr. David's there, um you can provide to us to provide to him, or is it something that a a that he can do with? Is it something that uh uh that he can do without your help or just by putting in a page from your report?
Um I can definitely walk you through it, it is a online, uh fully electronic form, so you'd need to get an account with E D P, which is a piece of cake. And then um I can walk you through filing the form, you don't need an F L S D to submit the release notification form.
And what will happen when we file that, do we get an E D P comes down and gives us orders to clean it up or what happens there?
So the next steps are that ma- Mass D E P uh assigns a release tracking number, so it's just a case number associated with this release. And then they would issue a letter, um it's called a notice of responsibility and it's a standardized letter that comes in the mail. Um goes to the person that whose name's on that R N F that form. Um and that will then outline the next steps and so the next steps are um the site enters the Massachusetts contingency plan process. And so the first step is within one year of notifying a release, you need to either um file what's called a permanent solution statement, which is a closure report. Or you can file what's called a phase one one initial site investigation report and tier classification. And so that's the first milestone, they give you a year or two um to look into it and and evaluate, assuming that the lead is um not, there's no other like immediate issues. Um if the, you know, the lead is at levels that aren't posing, it's called an imminent hazard, doesn't need any other immediate assessment criteria.
Okay, and can you give us an estimate of what um what kind of cost we're looking at to do to do this kind of remediation? Roughly?
Um um so the remediation itself, the options are really dependent upon um future assessment. And so the purpose of the phase one is to identify, you know, whether or not you have a problem. And then your next phase of assessment would determine essentially how how big the problem is and how well, you know, your options are for remediation. So um Massachusetts is a risk-based program, so basically you could potentially be in a situation where we could collect more data and you may be able to do a risk characterization and close out the site without remediation. Um because the risk, uh um the arithmetic average is low enough that it wouldn't really pose a risk. Um or we could do like a spot excavation program if we determine that the extent and of the lead soils is very limited and that's feasible. Um or you may want to remediate, you may also remediate voluntarily more than you really need to to get the site up to a cleaner level. Um because of the proposed future development, so there's a few different paths that you can take. Um and I would recommend doing additional assessment to really understand the nature and extent of the contamination, like how deep is it within the berm? Um how, you know, what's the like length and width of the area that's been impacted by the the shooting range? Um and then what the variation in the the levels of lead are.
What of information?
Katie, uh can I, can I, can I jump in for one second with a quick question? Um and we're working on another project uh that that involves lead and from what I understand uh from working with that is that the the risk is associated in with kind of the age of the users that might be using it in the future, if I'm not mistaken. And so like on our other project, we have a daycare, so that risk went high because of the age and the developmental impacts it could result. If the city or the town is looking at something like senior housing, um does the risk assessment go lower because of the age of the potential users?
So um we have to look at current and foreseeable futures, so it really does depend on a few factors. There's a whole bunch of soil categories in the M C P and they are determined based on whether you have children present um or adults present or both. Then their intensity of use, like are they gardening, are they doing some sort of um intense recre- recreational activity? Uh are they coming into the contact with the soil a lot, because you're right in that having children present does um necessitate having more conservative risk standards. Um and that's the reason why the standards are set, they're basically protective of a child ingesting soil accidentally. Um so what you could do is sometimes people can leave contamination in place and they they file what's called an activity and use limitation on the property and that would restrict like certain uses of the site such as building a daycare, um allowing um gardening, things of that nature. And that's another way to, you know, close out this site with less remediation potentially.
Got a question, uh if a if a next phase comes in to do further assessment, does that stop the clock? Meaning like the hundred and twenty days or does the assessment run concurrently w- with the timeline here that we are allotted to uh do the do the work?
Um so you would typically want not to work on that assessment in that first year so that when you file the next report, which is due at the one year anniversary, that you have something in there that is more of a a story to show Mass D E P. Um Mass D E P does obviously want sites to progress in the system and to be closed out as expeditiously as possible. Um and so the phase one initial site investigation, what that report includes is um it's similar to a phase one E S A, which we already did, but it does include a summary of subsurface activities. And so you put in the um samples that we already collected, we put the summary of that and then hopefully you'd also have additional data at that point to summarize as well. To show the Mass D E P that you are evaluating the nature and extent of contamination and and moving the site along in the system.
I have a question for you, I think I think this is still being used by the police department as rifle range. Um and I understand from your report, it sounds like there's a pos- there's a, which would be discontinued if we decide to go, you know, to develop it, but um your report suggested that there is ammunition that does not contain lead that can be used in rifle shooting, is that right? And would you recommend that?
Um it it's sorry, repeating.
Your report suggests.
It is not, um.
That there's ammunition that doesn't use lead anymore that could be used in a rifle range situation? Um should we recommend to our police department that, I mean, I have no, we have no problem with them continuing to use it as a rifle range until we have a better plan for it. And it sounds like this could take forever to resolve, so we may just go on to another parcel or something, but in the meantime, should we make that recommendation, does such ammunition exist and?
Push the clock back, but it's like more sure, it's much more difficult to find. It's also not exactly the same.
Um um I think if that's feasible, then that would make sense to not exacerbate it. I um I'd have to dig a little bit more into it to see and and perhaps even talking to them to understand even more about the history. I believe we interviewed them as part of the phase one, but maybe they do have more information to divulge about um ammunition that was used there in the past. Um and one of the, you know, there is a a potential other option here that I, you know, I don't wanna rule out completely is I'm not sure if the berm itself was uh built from sand that's in the area that was pristine. Um it's possible that maybe that berm also contained like an urban fill that was already contaminated with lead. So that's something that an additional assessment would help to figure out is whether or not that, those lead hits are really relative to the the ammunition from the uh police shooting range versus something else like a fill that was brought on, cause that that berm is obviously on man-made. So so that's, you know, another another option as well to consider and and look into and and that's what you'd be doing, you know, the first year is to go and um make that that fact finding and ask those questions and try to formulate what's called a conceptual site model, which is just this understanding of how this release came to um be located on that area and um the extent of it.
I think there is some history in the refer- initial report. That would clarify that without having to do too much, but. Um, okay. You wanna address the street sweeping unless there's other rifle range issues, okay? Somebody?
Yeah, for the for the street sweepings, we would um just recommend that they get disposed at a properly licensed facility, such as a landfill or a reuse facility. We didn't identify anything that would be considered reportable, which is good news, but um that would be a recommendation. We did sample for typical parameters required for landfills as well to help with that.
And can you also explain, it seemed to me from reading the report, that Massachusetts does have a policy on disposal of street sweeping? Can you explain what the town's supposed to be doing to comply with that? And if we do or don't, if you know?
Yep, um so I'm going to have to, I read it, I read it a few, a cou- you know, a few times through, but um um one of the options is like Paige said, to bring those street sweepings to a landfill. Uh I'm trying to remember, there's another, I think there's another option where you can bring it somewhere where it's properly stored. Um but we could re- review the policy and and send that as well as a supplement and then provide some other options. Um but I think the landfill option is probably the easiest or like path with least resistance. Um but yeah, they they want to cease what the activities are currently, um you know, sending that to the the lot. It's not um considered one of, it's not one of the allowable options.
Do do we know, uh I I see David there, but I don't know whether he can speak to us, could you have to unmute him?
Okay, he can unmute himself.
Or can you, can you hear us?
He's on, he's on mute.
I don't think he can talk to us.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Oh, there you are, hi.
Hi.
Um, we're great, thanks, um do you know if if the street sweepings are still being deposited on lot fifty seven?
I'm quite sure, it's all that, what's being done on lot fifty seven?
Are the, are the, are the street sweepings, you know, from the street sweeper, are they still being deposited on lot fifty seven by the D P W?
I'll have to ask, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can only imagine that it is.
Okay, thank you.
I do know they don't pick up like they used to because now they use the liquid salt, there's not, there's almost no standard between the buffer roads.
Um so I did just open the policy, um just so I can give you a little bit more information. So there are um specific requirements for where you tempor- temporarily store it. So you can store the street sweepings at the site where they were generated, such as a parking lot. And they can be stored at a D P W yard that's under the control of um the municipality. Um and then you're supposed to protect them from wind, rain, dust or erosion, so that would mean like cut them potentially. Um and then it says that the storage must be temporary, they, if they are going to be reused, they have to be reused with one, with within one collection. Um and then the approved reuse options are so, we already said use at landfills, they can also be used as fill in public or private um parking lots or ways. Um but they need to, they have to be a set of criteria, like they cannot be collected from urban roads. Um and there's a kind of a host of criteria there and they can't be used within a hundred foot buffer zones, for instance. Um and then it could also be used as an additive to restricted use composted states as well as reuse as an anti-skid material. So there are a set of, they're very, it's a good policy, it's very specific and laid out, so that's something we can send along
Can, can you send it to us?
Um for your review and see what option makes the most sense.
Thank you. Okay. Um I think I don't know that there's any action we can take tonight. Uh if you want to put together a a letter that would discuss how this risk assessment would work, I mean, and um and what that would cost. Uh we are, part of our problem is, the reason we got to where we are is we are the Affordable Housing Committee. And we've already spent a good chunk of C P C money that was appropriated for affordable housing to try to address these issues to see if this lot was suitable, and I guess that's the question we're left with. So without knowing what the remediation costs are and the timeframes and stuff, we can't make that basic decision. So you could send that along, the steps, the list of the steps and what the cost for that site assessment would be and what the timeframe would be. I suppose that's the next step. Okay?
Yep, we'll we'll do that, we'll prepare something together that outlines that, um as well as the cost. Um and then just to note, obviously this says fortunately it is the um upper edge of the site, so maybe there's an option once the costs are understood if that, you know, it may not, that's sort of slow down development if you still have the funding. Um because you could potentially be, you know, fixing this issue while you're moving forward once we understand the costs, so. And hopefully there's maybe a little bit of silver lining there since it's not smack dab in the middle of the site, but definitely we'll get something together and pull that together and send them that over.
And if if we were to do do this site, we would have to build a road, there is a road there, but we would have to move it and build a new one.
Mm-hmm.
So I I understood that sometimes these street sweepings, if they're not too, you know, you said it could be used as roads, maybe we could cover it and incorporate into the road or something?
Mm-hmm.
Reuse it, reprove.
Um anyway, if there's, those options would be good to know. So we'll wait to hear from you on those things. And we'll contact the police chief.
Sure.
And the D P W uh director and find out what what the present status is with those uses for that lot. Okay? Other questions, David, you have any questions?
Alice, does the uh, uh just a quick question, does the town have its own landfill?
No. No, we kept our landfill. David can maybe answer that better, but.
Back in the eighties.
Back in the eighties.
No, that's right, we we don't, we don't have the landfill anymore.
We do have, if you can.
I mean, if you had one, if you just move them there.
Well.
No.
I'm interested in the road solution because one thing we have is ten thousand potholes. So if it could be mixed in with pavement material and used to fill potholes, you know, might save us a lot of money and. But I don't know.
Or mend to the road on on site, put forward a road.
Or put it, or leave it on site to put into that road or?
Yep.
My my, I guess my sticking point here is spending affordable housing C P C money, C P A money to remediate town environmental problems, you know, it doesn't get us.
Right.
So if they're, and we're, for example, this lot, this lot is competing with several tax foreclosure lots, right? So if we cannot make it work, we'll probably go to another lot that maybe you don't have to invest all this money in to get it going, you know? So that's why I'd like to know what the cost is and the timeframe and stuff.
I I think the issue is is that that we never really got to do the part of the pro- process where we kind of did some concept planning.
Right.
And um I'm recalling the uh uh the profile of the roadway from the main roadway, it it kind of goes up and then starts to come back down and plateaus. So if a concept plan was developed, you know, uh what I envisioned was that that grade would all be cut down. And then some of that fill moved into the hole to kind of create a level plateau for for housing. So even if, you know, you're uh you're commenting about using it under the roadway, you'd have to come up with some sort of a plan to figure out where that roadway would be to, so that we didn't have to dig it up and do it again in the future. So I think even before we got to that point, we'd have to do some concept planning and it doesn't sound like we have uh all that much tree in of time in order to do that. Um but, correct if I'm wrong on that count.
Um.
Right, about a year.
About a year.
Well, if you think it could be, I mean, we're we're novices here, um. I mean, there there the gravel pits behind it, ha- we have to have a road that accesses those pits and those owners, I I spoke to them today. They're working on a plan to develop the backland into housing too. So there are a lot of moving pieces here, the reason I like this particular parcel is because it has good access to sixty eight for emergency services and good access to, you know, Walmart grocery store down the road, so it has some benefits and there's that, and the best place would be in the middle of town, we have no land in the middle of town. So it's sort of rating this site against other sites, uh but the deeper we get into cleanup issues and costs, the more it's a negative for voting for that piece, you know what I mean? So I mean, uh the other thing that she said is, well, the lead remediation depends upon what your use is, right? So we can't actually answer that question right now either. So it maybe it would make sense to put the money instead of in cleanup into a a very rudimentary at least development plan. I don't, I don't know, we can.
I think it makes sense, Alice, just to get them to get those letter to us so we can actually look at the cost factor here.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe can really look at it as a whole picture.
All right, I, I agree, what, what Bill is saying, I don't know whether.
Because the cleanup is now, but it's not going anywhere, because it's going to be.
Well, and, and the other thing, Alice, I'd like to mention is, we haven't talked about this, but the police have to, they have to go out and qualify for the police department to work there.
Yeah.
Where are they gonna go, and if we're talking about possibly asking them to look at a different use instead of lead, what's the cost factor with that, and I don't know a lot about it, but.
Yes, it's not practical.
So, you know, and that would be a big burden on the town and the police department.
It's not practical.
So they wouldn't have anywhere to go, and, you know, that's, that's something we need to look at.
The bullet weights are different.
The police department, they'll, they'll be part of that anyways, but, um, as the planning board, that's another big problem, too.
Another problem though, Bill, is also that a lot of the range is not actually on town land, it's not.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which is disinvestigated, so it, it is a.
Uh-oh. It's a problem.
It's probably a problem, we have a, a firearms expert on our board, which I forgot, John, so he tells me that the alternative ammunition isn't practical.
Correct, it's extraordinarily expensive as well as not the same bullet weight, so it's not effective for training.
Doesn't work the same.
Right, it would, you know, you could train shooting all brass, and it's not going to be the same when you actually fire your real lead bullets, so, it's not good.
Okay, so, if we did nothing, this is directed to John Furman with this parcel, but let it continue on as a street sweeping dump and a fire.
A firing range.
A firing range. Then we wouldn't be required to do any of the cleanup, would we, because its use is then a firing range, which you'd expect lead to be at and it to be remote like it is, or. I'm.
Um, um, so the remediation is dependent on the people, like adults that are present, it's not the, it's not necessarily the, the specific use. Um, so, so for instance, like a firing range is kind of like a commercial use, like it's not a daycare or a residential setting, um.
Very limited use.
But we have to look, we have like the zoning of the property as well, uh, and then the fact that the property is in a drinking water area. Also does have an impact on that, that remediation standard, so. We have to look at it and see like, once we got more data, um, what that risk assessment would show us essentially and, um, see what the option is, but. Um, and like I said, you could file like an activity use limitation to restrict the use and then therefore, you know, not allow children to go to that, that area. But we really have to look at it and dig in, it's, it's, I mean, that's a little hard to answer with the limited information we have. Um, so there's just a, a few different o- options there.
I, I think the other, uh, issue to consider, too, is that I, I, I believe the berm, berm is along the right of a way that leads to the back property. So it, yeah, so Alice, if they're developing housing and, and planning and using this, you're certainly not going to want to be shooting across the roadway. Uh, into this berm as that gets developed, so I think the firing range is pretty much done. It, I, I don't know that they can continue to use it.
Well. The backland, we don't have a plan yet, you know, I'm just, it's very preliminary, the stages, but we, it obviously involves a lot of people in town. Well, put together some numbers for us, give us some ideas, and we'll continue the discussion, I think, among ourselves and the police department and DPW and. Um, I, I can't solve these problems here tonight, for sure, so.
That's, that is tr- true.
But cleanup costs would be helpful, what you could give us, um. And if it could be incorporated into some kind of a development plan where the road would be where the fire, you know, the firing range was. The sweepings could go into it to mitigate the cleanup costs, that might help us, but it still doesn't solve the problem of, um, you know, trying to relocate these uses, so. We'll have to look into that. Okay, anybody else?
So Catherine, uh, Paige and myself will get together and kind of hash out some ideas, um, and send them in here.
No.
Yeah, and feel free to call me or, and, or come back to the board with them, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, anybody else have questions?
All right, very good.
David?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks for coming, and thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, I'll say, I've actually done a lot of.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
I've done a lot of research into making ranges, and usually those berms are supposed to be like removed and replaced over a time period, so you like shoot into the berm for two years, then you're gonna pay to dispose of those, the lead inside the berm, and then you replace it with fresh sand, and then.
Yeah. I don't want.
Yes, exactly, because then it doesn't contaminate the ground, you just contaminate the berm, you pay to have those things removed, and then you replace it with fresh.
How long have they been shooting into this one?
I don't, I don't standard.
It's probably like since fifty seven, you know, I'm.
No, we don't standard, so, mandated by the state or.
No.
There are some, there are some, there are some regulations and then there are some recommendations, and so.
So if, if you could, if you could bring those, not the recommendations, but what are the regulations, because regulations is really truly what has to be adhered to.
Correct.
And recommendations, obviously, is a good, good practices that can be added into this here, but if the town at this point in time, or particular department, is not adhering to the regulations, then. For all intents and purposes, I think we need to make sure that that gets alerted.
Right, and if we're looking into new locations for a new range, they're also gonna have to follow the same regulations.
Uh, abso- absolutely, absolutely.
If we could get them to agree on a new location, this is actually a pretty good lot to develop for senior housing, I think.
I don't, is it even allowed in most places anymore? Isn't that a hard use to get permitted?
What?
Yeah, but doesn't, well, yeah, for a police department, yeah, for a police department, I don't know.
You mean a firing range?
A firing range for a police department to qualify.
I don't know what the requirements are for a police department for a regular public range, it's not quite as.
You know, we might be pushing them up somewhere anymore, because it might cost all, where, where all the departments go.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do some research.
I know at the prison, when I worked there, we had a lot of police departments that came up and used the one that we built on site up there because they had nowhere to go.
In Gardner?
Yeah, the state prison, yeah.
But that's not too far away.
I know.
No, no, it's not, but I, I don't know, I don't know what the use is anymore, I, I'm not quite that sure.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I understand, it's a very interesting concept, and I would assume that as a result of it not being far away, you're not talking about somebody having to go into, over the state to New York or Vermont or Hampshire.
Yeah. No, 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 no.
To do something like this here, but rather using something that's more regional with an acceptable distance. And I'm not thinking that this is done on a high periodic basis, it's probably the sh- going to the shooting range and.
Twice a year.
So we're not talking a high use for all intents and purposes either.
But I don't, I don't know what the other departments do nowadays, I don't know, I'm not involved in any of that.
Well, I'm sure that the police department here would probably have that information, and they'd come up with some, what, what are the strategies?
He's the judge.
Right, right, well, that would be the chief would have, that would be his area, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
I know that some of the towns in Metro West, they use, uh, some of the rotten gun clubs, and some of them go to Hudson, and some of them go to Harvard, so.
David?
Yeah, oh. Okay, because some of them are limited what they can shoot for the, for the type of weapons that are around, so.
Mm-hmm.
They're all limited to, to shooting cer- certain, certain caliber because of the, the range and where it's, what's gonna happen to the rounds on the other ground.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can get David Nixon and the police chief and, and, and me to just sit down and say, we're studying this lot, and there aren't a lot of options in town.
It, uh, it does seem like it would be nice in the long run to pass the liability of operating a range to someone else other than the town.
Okay. Oh, absolutely.
Right, and we, and if, if what John says is they, they're stuck with rebuilding costs, if they're playing by the rules, that's gonna be an expense, too. So maybe they'd be willing to consider another spot.
Correct.
I don't think the street sweepings is insurmountable, and I, and I think it could probably be reused.
Especially if they don't really do that anymore.
No, the highway superintendent changed a few years ago to liquid salt, that's why we have the best roads in the area in the winter time. They don't take, we, prevent them what I'm gonna say, but basically I believe they treat the roads before the storm, they treat them again, and then they go and plow them, so. Usually by the end of the storm, our roads are clear, and it's, they don't use any sand.
Sure.
They only use sand like on dirt roads, so there's really minimal, minimal cleanup now.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, you don't see the street sweeper in front of you, you know, it's.
How the, 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 the question would be is, is how much remnant is there at this point in time at this location?
Right, I couldn't tell you, they used it a few years.
Yeah, I mean, are we talking about tens of tons, or are we talking about hundreds of tons, and that's, that's the.
No, I'm.
I'm not even sure where they, they can.
It, it, it isn't a huge amount.
No, but I know they used it for quite a while, and then they stopped, I believe, but, and I, don't quote me because I don't remember the days and times.
Yeah. But I think from a disposal perspective, that is the biggest issue, is, is the quantity, and it's a.
Well, but I believe, I agree with what Alice was saying, if we can utilize them, then from what we're, then we could reuse them as a.
Precisely, but, but again, if you have hundreds of t- if you have hundreds of tons, you may not necessarily be able to utilize it all at once.
Right. Right, right.
If you have a limited quantity and you are going to be using it, say, for example, for building a road or rebuilding something, then it can vary be, very easily be absorbed.
Right, or polished. Right.
Well, this may be the next phase, is to figure out how much lead and how much to be used in this.
Well, I think what we need to do is get the right people on board with the, the whole next part of the.
Sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to make progress on it.
What about?
To, um, to Alice's earlier point, there's, there's a certain, certain element of it that, that doesn't feel right. At least as far as affordable housing and CPC, because this is really a long-term, ongoing municipal problem.
Yeah.
That's falling onto the Affordable Housing Committee.
Right.
Whereas this is perhaps something that really should be addressed by the select board and using funds out of the general budget, because this.
I think, yeah.
I don't think we should pay for the cleanup by a CPC fund.
Yeah, there, there's no, and even as it is now, um, we should perhaps see what we can do about an allocation on that, because. Why, why is the Affordable Housing Committee using its money to fix a long-term police problem, um, to fix a long-term.
Yeah.
And I would, I agree with that, I think.
Originally, I know, because you're newer to the board, it was, it's the only piece of town-owned land in town, so that's why, and we had this money appropriated back in two thousand sixteen to try to acquire.
That's what we started with.
Land and do something about it, so, since there was no land to build, we took a two-prong approach. We, we looked at what lots we could foreclose tax on to get land, and we looked at the cost of making this one piece that the town already owns works with that money. And that is allowed, the C, if you look for CPC affordable housing, they say a town can use the money to remediate land to be used or to acquire land to be used, right? And that was sort of the theory, but we don't have enough money now left in this pot to actually come, come up with a plan to develop it. You know, we might have an offer like.
And that's why I think it's a good idea to push what, what he's saying here.
So maybe we have to tell the town.
But we've done that, I think we've done the basic work, and that, that I think fo- fell appropriately under the planning board, the question now is, is.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yes.
Now that we've found these problems, and we would like to take this here to potentially the next step, there is some, there's a gap in here that needs to be addressed, and I think this, this gap needs to be addressed.
Take, take it to the board.
By the other bodies within the town, and that is the select board and the police department and the DPW con- conjunction.
I just hope this doesn't. I just hope this doesn't fall into the same pot as our Gardner Road problem, where nothing's happened.
Yeah, I want to keep the pressure on, but I do, I do want to say, I talked to Sandy today.
Separate issue, but I, I agree.
Yeah.
I, I did talk to Sandy today, I don't know whether, you remember the other lots?
Mm-hmm.
There was one, it was like.
On Ragged Hill Road, right?
No, that's Habitat.
No, no, that's Habitat, and I want to talk about that, too.
Okay.
But this was of the ones we went to tax foreclosure on.
Okay.
Yeah, the Habitat lot was the other lot the town owned, and I tried, they owned five of them for, for Christopher's.
Yeah.
And I asked for all five, since we're a hundred and twenty, we're supposed to have a hundred and twenty-three housing, formal housing units, and we got like seventeen or something in town.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, and they, they sold, they said, no, we want to sell, sell them, but we'll give you one, and that's what Habitat's building on. And those were the only two lots, but these, the, the, there is, turning through the system, a tax foreclosure on four lots that we picked out.
Okay. Yeah, that's right.
One of which is an access lot, so really three.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and Sandy said today that the one on Old Westminster Road, which is mostly wet, but it's conjoined with the one on Streeter Road.
The larger one, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That that one's almost done, so that would be our, I mean, we're almost half title to that, that's close. I don't know why some progressed faster than others, and we're all filed at the same time, but I don't know any much about Leanne Court, but. So, I mean, that's our other thing, uh, we can do is see if we can acquire that, which is not that valuable in itself, but if you acquire the next one. Um, and then with that comes a strip out to Streeter Road, but the trouble with Streeter Road is so bad, you'd never put seniors.
Actually, they cleaned the road up now that it's a town road, it's.
Have they done better with it?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape.
Oh, they graded it, it's nice now.
Really?
Now the grader goes over once a year, it's pretty good.
After they came to the planning board, and you made it up, they, the people living on that road agreed to pay a portion of the cost for the town to upgrade the road to town standard.
Yeah.
And they graded it and they fixed the drainage on it, now they have to pay extra on their tax dollars for so many years.
Oh, they agreed to a betterment, excellent.
And then we made it a town road, it was voted a town road.
Yeah, I remember that, we, well, the women did that, excellent.
So that's, that's all set now, it's, it's not a bad road. The only problem I have with this lot here, knowing the area, it's way in the middle of nowhere, if it, you know, you put.
Yeah, but the other one's really in the middle of nowhere, it's up on Westminster Line.
Right.
And by middle of nowhere, you mean my neighborhood.
Well, it's just, you living there, if we're gonna make this.
You gotta get it so the, the elderly people can get.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not a community place, there's, there's no public transportation, you're not near any stores, the closest store to there would be Vincent's in Westminster.
It's like, right.
And, and.
And you're looking at fifteen to eighteen minutes away driving.
Right, right, and it's more part of the EMTs and stuff.
Yeah, it, it is the middle of nowhere.
So, actually.
The road is actually in beautiful shape, because I worked the details when they redid the whole road, and it's beautiful out of.
I'm gonna take a ride up there tomorrow.
Old Westminster Road?
Oh, no, Old Westminster Road's great.
You go, Old Westminster Road, and then you take it all the way to the end, there's three roads on the, kind of extra on to it on both ends there, are off the Grimes.
Yeah. Right.
You know how to go around?
Right.
It's, uh, those roads are both in really nice shape now, um, the town did a good job on Streeter Road.
Well, I, I'm just thinking that maybe we wanna, we wanna keep on with our little two-prong test, so out of those lots, really, the, um.
Right, right.
The big one there on Streeter Road, fourteen acres, it's landlocked except that it has an access road, so you could put a strip, that's one of the one, one of the lots is a strip. One of the lots is the big lot in back, and the other one's the one that's a budding that fronts on Westminster, Old Westminster Road.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's workable, but it's also remote, in my opinion.
Right, but, but they're remote, that was my comment, they're, they're remote for, for whatever use.
Versus fifty, fifty seven is also kind of remote, but it's not as remote, it's only about half a mile off of, not even, off of sixty eight. Pitcherville, the one on Pitcherville, Lot fifty seven on Pitcherville.
Oh, oh, okay, the other one we're talking about, right, it's a nice location, I just think there's a lot of issues.
Yeah. Yeah, there are a lot of issues.
Which is gonna take more time.
So, taking things out of order here, because it's really relevant, is I also, you might recall that one of the things we said last time was I was, I would talk to the Marinelli people again.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and talk to Mr. Brown. So I did talk to Mr. Brown today, and it turned, you know, I sent the letter, you guys all read the letter, back to, to Mr. Wiggins.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the attorney, that said, we're not gonna do this for you, but we think it should be housing and we think others would be interested.
Yep.
So Brown has now gone to Wiggins as well and talked to them and his people, and they say, and they're working on also, um, trying to. Cut, uh, work to get access out on sixty eight through one of those other two parcels, and they will do.
Mm-hmm.
Their hope is that they can put something together that would be about seventy housing units perhaps in a subdivision, but could be clustered. And would be a big component of affordable, so that'd be really compatible with our senior development, but, I mean, how long is that?
Well, at least if we have that on the plate for the seniors, that's, that's my biggest thing right there, that, because that could also be part of the affordable housing number, too.
Yeah, it could be, but you don't want to build it and then have, that's what I said to him, what we don't want to do is, is build this out and then have. These people living on a highway with, you know, construction vehicles coming and going, especially gravel trucks, right, in front of our lot, because all that's behind them. But if they had a second access and they're gonna limit it to housing.
Right.
It could be done.
That was, but they haven't hauled gravel a lot, they're in ages.
I know, but they, they have to, they can't, both parties, both.
That's very true, last year there was, there was hauling out on St. Bill Road.
So that's a big deal.
There was?
Yes, and there was a complaint raised.
Okay.
Because there's one of the lots that is there that has a gravel permit, and they are under the threshold, which is what they're doing, they're doing it every year.
It was the one. It's one on the left, they can't rev it anymore, but yeah.
Yep.
But this was, this would be Brown and Marinelli, and then they have to either make, they have to talk to voucher or one of the other landowners that has a frontage lot on sixty eight.
Right. Right.
But they're trying to put something together, so, I don't know, there's a lot to think about, but I wanted to tell you, I had talked to him, that was very positive, because.
Far cry in front of what we have two years ago.
Right, and.
They wouldn't even talk to us.
Right, and, and Brown has to fill his lot, he needs fill, and they need to, but they don't have a lot of money to do it, so what they would do is try to come up with a conceptual plan and sell the whole thing to a developer. I, the thing that keeps coming back to my mind is Claudia, you know, the senior lady, who says the waiting list for Harbiston House is seven years. Is like, we, we should not wait seven years before we.
And it's, I've been on boards here in town for a number of years, and I was on the affordable housing many, many years ago, and nothing's ever happened.
Yeah, that's why I want to really make something happen.
But, but you've gone a long ways with this, and just the Ragged Hill Road, you know, the build we're gonna get up there, it's the first thing ever.
Yeah.
Other than the, the senior center that was built when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you were, yeah, and I spoke, I spoke to Carolyn, by the way, so as long as we're on affordable housing thing, she was great, she said. So, you, we knew last time they got their building permit, now they've done the clearing, um, and they've done, they've marked the corners of the house, they're marking, they mark the septic system, I don't think it's completely planned. The well is the next step, somebody had, one of the companies has, um, donated solar panels. The well is the next step, somebody had, one of the companies has, um, donated solar panels for the roof.
Oh, wow.
They're nice.
Um, Mon, he, they're working on a contract with Monty Tech Vocational School for all the construction trades that go into it,
Mm-hmm.
and that should be finalized, um, soon. Um, an architect is working on a foundation design, um, they don't wanna do a full deep basement, which, um, because it's so rocky, it has.
It's a crawl space on it?
It's really, so it may be a crawl space, but she says there's techniques to work with crawl, a crawl space type basement now.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like it used to be the old cement slab, they've got techniques.
Mm-hmm.
So they're looking at that, she says she's ready to start a local project committee, you know, which Ilya said she might be on, and also who, um, Dev, um, Reed said she might be on, the Streeter Road lady.
Yes.
So, and she would like to connect with them, and she'd like to get that started, and just start to promote it around town.
Oh, that's awesome.
And she said, uh, they want a ribbon cutting ceremony sometime in late September, and she said they think that with the wood they've cut off the lot, they'd like to open it up to people that wanna take it, firewood, as opposed to sell it or.
Oh, wow.
So, maybe with the ribbon cutting ceremony, you know, come and take a bundle of fire, I I don't know.
And make a donation.
Yeah, and make a donation. Anyway, she was just really excited about it.
There you go. That's awesome.
So, uh, so, talk to Ilya about it and let me know.
I I will, I will.
If I can share the email with her, and we'll try to kick off that committee, and I'll go to Dev Reed.
Oh, that's great.
Yep.
Um, so, so all that's good. So progress at least on one.
Got it.
Um, okay, Damon Schmidt's not coming tonight, and you have some update on that? You wanna tell us what's going on with him? He's, what you told me.
Yeah, he's reading, uh, his final building inspection still, so he, um, had an electrical inspection today, he has to do a couple more things on before we can give him a final sign-off from the building department, and Bill Murray's going to do his site inspection for his, as built tomorrow morning, along with Bowie's. So it doesn't look like they're gonna be making the August CSC meeting.
And, and they didn't get their planting in, after all the equipment.
That's what it looks like.
Damon didn't.
I don't think either one of them.
Either one. There's a lot of progress going in Bowie, so, at least from a construction perspective, the other place is just nada.
The, yeah, building department gave, um, Bowie, closed all Bowie's permits, so he is all set with phase one as far as building department is concerned.
Really? Good. So I got a letter from Bowie, again, forgive the order here, um, which would be in communications, an email from him that asked, he says, I don't wanna put in the landscaping this year, can I have a, um, you know, kind of a, can I push it down the road? Um, and, and my feeling was, that isn't really the planning board's call, I mean, we've done a special permit for him, right? This is what he's gotta do, and if Roland and Bill and wanna cut him some slack on that, I I mean, we're not, I'm not, I don't really have a problem with that, it's been a great planning time anyway, so I just wrote him back and said, you know, he needs to clear it with, please ask Roland and Bill Murray when he sees him. Um, so I just, anyway, those projects, okay. Um, fifty-five, oh, I know, where are you, you're wondering, okay, so four E is fifty-five Old Boston Turnpike Road, which was the lady with the five dogs that Mister Dakota was complaining so bitterly about when he was here. Um, and I sent her a letter, which you guys all read.
Mm-hmm.
Which was the second letter to which I also, I did get an answer to it. Um, I got an answer from Cheryl, who's the dog officer. And she, this is actually a letter from Mallory, uh, summarizing a conversation, it says, she stated that she spoke with Cindy, this is Cindy Phillips, who's the one we wrote to for the, about the five dogs, and because the town revoked her kennel license, she never recorded it, I think she means.
Cindy never recorded her special permit.
She ne, I wrote, she never, I think it means she never recorded the special permit. Uh, and does not have a valid kennel license, but she says we revoked the kennel license, which we didn't, she just expired, cause she has to renew it. But she says, but therefore, she concludes the animal control officers will not be inspecting the property or getting involved in this matter. Which just makes no sense to me.
That doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't.
So I have a dog officer if they're, you know what I mean? But she apparently views her job as only as kennel inspections.
Yeah, if there's a valid kennel permit, if there's not a valid kennel permit, it becomes a zoning issue with the zoning enforcement officer.
So has she? So has she moved the extra dog?
No, she just registered another one this week.
No.
So what, what's the?
A six.
Was that allowed?
Yeah.
To register? I don't know, like, assuming the town clerk took her, her application and her fee.
Well, can we stop it from being granted?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make any sense if you are basically, okay.
I don't know how that works, I never dealt with dog permits.
Well, zoning would be under the building inspector, correct?
Yes, C Z O E.
That would be under. Z O E, yeah.
Well.
Z E O, cause I'm, I'm like.
I do know.
No, Zoe is 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 not, right, is the Z O, yes, the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
So. Um.
Which we've asked to get involved already multiple times.
We have, and the same issue exists really with the Gardner Road issue, and so there was another message you sent me that said, um, David's working on a coalition meeting, like, this relates to the dogs, but it should really relate to both.
Yeah, I think we were working a while back on getting another coalition meeting together.
So, my feeling is, I, we have done what we can as a planning board, we don't have enforcement powers.
No, we don't.
But I don't mind to be part of a coalition meeting where we get the forces together.
Well, I, I mean, let me, let me, however, sa- say that there is commercial activity happening, or appears to be commercial activity happening, right?
This is two forty-eight.
And two forty-eight, yes, yes.
And two forty-eight, and so if there is commercial activity happening at two forty-eight, that does come under our purview. And I think one of the things we can do here is, is to request explanations to what kind of activity is actually happening there. And if there is commercial activity happening, they need to be notified that that is not permitted, and any violations at that point in time will therefore be referred to the zoning enforcement officer.
I have no co-writing the same kinda letter I wrote to Cindy Phillips.
Yeah.
You are violating ba-ba-ba-ba, let us know what your plans are to remediate this.
And that.
And copying everybody involved. I can do the same thing, if that makes you.
Okay. I think that's fair.
No, I think we need to do that, because at least from our perspective, we are doing our due diligence, I think the next question would be, and I don't, I don't see, uh, uh, David on the call anymore.
Got him popped off. I'll close that over then.
Is he, he probably just stuck for that one.
Yeah.
He he's, he's out doing something else, is why I was anticipating what.
Okay, but I think it's very important for the town administrator as the overall coordinator and the administrator of the town to basically take the bull by the horns in this particular case and say, fine, we have a vi- what appears to be a violation here, we have one party that is going against the other party, and we do have some violations that need to be addressed, and it has to be addressed either through the zoning enforcement officer, through the Police Department, or coordinated up for the most of it.
Over court.
Well, maybe I should write this letter to the zoning officer and to the town administrator.
And a, and to the town administrator.
It's, um.
And let him tangle with the owner.
In thinking about this, uh, ahead of time, I, um, I went and I pulled the, um, the IMA for, with Gardner, for, um.
Thirty days.
For zoning enforcement. Well, it's not, there's a few things that are interesting to me. Um, it's not completely clear that we contracted with Gardner in the, uh, in the exhibit in a way that, uh, that covers this, um. There's, there's some questions that I have there that are outside really the scope of this meeting. The other thing is, is, uh, if, um, if we ask the, uh, the zoning enforcement officer to appear at the meeting, he shall appear at the meeting according to the terms of the agreement.
Which we've already requested to, and he hasn't shown to.
So if there's a dispute between the parties, that needs to be sorted out between Gardner and Hubbardston, so that's gonna need to be sorted out between the Select Board and the Mayor of Gardner.
And I've already asked the town administrator to reach out to the mayor today on separate issues, so if we have another letter we can include in that, that would probably be it.
Okay, well, I'll try to get an accurate statement of, if I understand it, what's going on in two forty-eight, I'll probably have to talk to you, cause I, you can't, I can't go on these properties. I can only work from what's been reported and where.
Sure, yeah.
I was told today there was a pool delivered there, they're putting a pool up now.
It, it's also probably, um, probably worth noting, so the ultimate authority for enforcement, I believe, uh, rests with the zoning board, and that actually gets delegated down to the officer, so I didn't have a chance to to finish that research, but I I believe the ultimate authority is there by statute and then gets delegated out. So, there, there might be some kinda avenue that's available there too, but I haven't finished that research.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that for me, so.
Yeah. You mean the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, that, that's why.
Yeah, they, the authority gets delegated to, I I need to.
The ZBA or the building inspector?
Um, but, let's table that and come back to it, I have some more research to do.
Okay.
Cause we are the zoning board, but it comes to the, as the planning board, we are, we are responsible for the zoning perspective, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals has met with Cindy Phillips in the past regarding this whole permit, and and put it all to bed, did our, what we had two many years ago. Um, we were all part of that, part of the enforcement, but it all came back to the building inspector's office also, for the enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing is, this issue of her, whether she ever had a special permit. And, I, I believe that there was a special permit signed, it was objected to, and it was never recorded, as a result.
Because of the trust, there's a trust, a land trust involved a lot of those parcels of land, and.
It never consented to the use, right.
Exactly.
What, what's the name of the person in tr- in charge of the trust?
David Dakota.
But I'm just saying, whether he is named in that trust, he's the sole person that can a, can approve this permit, he never did, and because of that, that's why he wrote you a letter. It was never approved.
Right, right, so it was never approved, but, so we can't take the step of revoking it, right?
It was never granted.
Because it was never granted, and it was never recorded, so it's for two reasons and stuff.
Well, it was granted by the planning, previous planning board, but it was never recorded, so that means it's null and void, correct?
Right, right, and even with the planning board, I think it may have been the reason, I mean, it was signed, cause I have that copy.
Correct.
But it may have been an appeal right out, you know, there is an appeal period, and there was court action going on at that time, but in any event,
Mm-hmm.
it wasn't recorded, it's not valid, she hasn't complied with it, so it really is an enforcement issue. So, like, Mister Dakota's come back and said to Mallory, what are you guys doing about it? And I think Mallory's analysis is like, well, we're the only people really listening to him, so that's why he comes to us, but we don't have really the power.
No, it has to go to the building inspector.
All right, well, I will try to get, we we could, gotta keep working on that.
As far as I know.
There's.
It should be a one meeting, a two-gender item, but I'll try to put the letter together for.
Well, we put the first meeting together, though, he just blatantly didn't show up.
Right.
That, that's a breach of the IMA, so, and we'll need to address that appropriately.
Okay, well, maybe, I don't, I can't talk to Roland, he doesn't work for me, I mean, he's, it's gotta be.
Right.
So this has to go directly, I think, this has to go to the town administrator, the town administrator represents us and the town in those matters.
Town administrator for the office.
Yeah. Correct.
Well, they were all copied in the letter, you saw it, that I went out, including the slipbooks, right?
Well, I think it's, like, a variation of the contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody.
We don't have an enforcement officer.
Yeah. It's also worth noting that the current IMA, uh, expires at the end of this fiscal year. Uh, and it, um, it might be worth us as a board expressing some of our feelings about the need for more robust enforcement to the Select Board,
Right.
uh, as they deliberate over what to do with this.
Yeah.
Right, if they renew the contract, there's gotta be a provision in it, more robust.
It's gonna be changed, modified, and and in all fairness, I know in the past it transpired in town, we lost our building inspector due to illness that we had, and there was nobody to fill those shoes properly, and there's nobody out there.
Yes.
I know two gentlemen live in town, expressed interest of trying to get certified at that, and I might even try and reach out to them again because they're good people.
I, I have to, like, beg differ though, because I've had, Emily worked here for two years, and I've had at least five qualified building inspectors come to me and say, like, what is going on, like, how is this being acceptable?
Really?
I'm surprised I heard that.
Um, and they've all said, one is open, you reach out, let us know, so there's people out there.
There is, okay.
This is amazing.
Maybe we just need to really encourage to them, tell the board of selectmen, I mean, I've told them, it's like, we can, you know, that there's no point in having zoning if nobody's gonna enforce it, you know?
That's right.
It's like, the, not the honor system, guys, it's supposed to be, these are the rules. So, uh, maybe we can make that point, that we do need enforcement.
I just would like to clarify in my comment that I'm, I'm not a spit, I'm not specifically addressing it at, um, at an individual. I'm addressing it at the fundamental flaws in the agreement between Gardner and Hubbardston.
Yeah.
Um, and that the, the reality that this contract was done, it just doesn't make sense in the reality that we're in now.
Well, if it's not, if it's not in the building inspector's contract, and it's probably the most onerous job he's got on his list, why would he do it? You know, I mean, it's, it's up to the town to, anyway, all right.
May I ask, uh, where did you have, uh, access to the copy of the IMA?
Uh, it's publicly available online, I can.
You go onto the.
On, on, on the Hubbardson, that's.
Yes, town administrator's page.
On. Got you, thank you.
All of our contracts are there.
Very good, thank you.
Well, every, every expiration of a document's a chance to renegotiate stuff, so I think that's a good point. So, um, we, uh, uh, um, okay, so the seventy-two acre parcel on Williamsville, where we left it is, I sent both the Country Hen and the Williamsville parcel to Bill, cause I told the petitioners I would, see if there's anything I missed. Um, with, basically with the seventy-two acre parcel, uh, Bill wrote back, I, I, did that get sent to everybody, his copy?
I don't think so.
Oh, well, maybe you could do that, can you make a note?
Sure.
Basically what he said though, is, um, we were right, that she'd have to put in the cul-de-sac, that she might not have to pave the whole road if it has existed. And it's in reasonable, you know, it's kinda like the North Comet Pond, a private way that was in existence.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And we would have to go out there and make that determination, uh, so that was what Bill said, but then she'd at least have to put in the extension in the cul-de-sac.
Right.
So I, we, we wrote back to her, and I gave her, we gave her Bill's, uh, answer, so she knew it was from him. I, and I said, if you're still interested in putting in the cul-de-sac, we'll have the board come out and evaluate the road. But I've sort of put the ball in her court, because I, I don't, she, I don't think she was looking to put in that kind of expense for one lot, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But it did explain that there's a five hundred foot dead end, it's really, unless you can get access to the other side, you're talking about one house.
Right. A lot of money.
Which is, yeah, the way it is, so, maybe we.
And, the, the other question I s- I have on that one specifically is, is her, the the frontage that is required.
Yeah.
And she did not, if I remember correctly, have the two hundred feet frontage.
So twenty feet of frontage.
That's why you build the cul-de-sac, you build your, you create your frontage.
The frontage would be on the cul-de-sac.
But the.
The frontage would be the cul-de-sac.
But it's, it's only the portion of the cul-de-sac that, uh, that adjoins that property, correct?
Well, you've got the, the house, the half, the.
You make it bigger.
You have, you have one, you have one property, which is the, which is the group home.
Half of the, yes. Good group home, and she could have the other half, and there is two hundred feet in there, yeah.
There was two hundred feet there, okay.
It's just, it's off the radius of the circle, you can make it bigger if you add to it, create two hundred feet.
She, but she, but she, he, he said this was an accepted, you can look at the recorded plan in the registry.
Yeah.
Yep.
And he said this was like black and white from the planning board, he doesn't really know why we didn't make the group home put it in.
We weren't here then.
Yeah, I mean, but why they didn't. Anyway, the Country Hen situation, so that's where that stands, if she comes back to us and says, no, we'd like to buy it, um, anyway, and we'll put in the cul-de-sac, then we'll go up down and look at the road, so it's, it's a little bit helpful to her, because the road is really, would really be expensive. But even the cul-de-sac could be really expensive, so I don't know whether we'll hear from her or not, but at least, at least that had been kicking around for a long time when we got an answer. And I feel the same thing with, the way with Co- the Country Hen, that had been kicking around for quite a while, and when he came with his drawings and I sent that to, now, did they get a copy of his? That, so that was in there, I can't remember, anyway, he said, basically.
And he's working on that.
He's got someone else working with him.
Yeah, somebody else, I, and, um, the little house on the end would have to be a ZBA matter, according to Bill.
Mm-hmm.
I think, uh, if they come back, I would personally probably support that, because it's, it's in, it, um, has so much state-owned land around it, that it's not a crowding problem.
No.
And, um, but I don't think there's any other way to do it, it wasn't, as far as I know, a pre-existing house, a foundation, or.
No. It was a, and the original house by itself many, many years ago.
Well, was it?
Yes.
Because of, Sessors' record says it was effectively built in the nineteen nineties.
I don't remember that.
Effectively built, maybe that's the appraiser, the way you're appraising.
I don't remember that at all.
But if, so.
I just remember from, from memory, it was always there, so.
If there was something there, then there would have been an opportunity, which they may have lost, I don't know, but when you split up a farm,
Right.
eighty-one L, I think, um, you know, the planning, the exceptions, is an exception for, um, where a planning board can allow a smaller parcel if it's splitting up two pre-existing buildings that pre-existed zoning. However, this was not that easy, because this house was on the dri- and the driveway were on one lot, and then the older house and the new wash house were on a different lot.
Right, and the other problem is the access road going back to the new barns on the back is all brand new.
Yes, so I think it's a.
So you kinda lose all of that.
Right, so I think it's a ZBA issue, I, but I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to it, but putting that little strip going around the back that he was posing is, is crazy. He, he even knew that, so, and, and then what Bill said with the respect to the, the beautiful old farmhouse, which nobody wants to see lost.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And is that he probably has enough frontage to, this frontage in. And is that he probably has enough frontage to, this frontage and area to divide it up, I mean, it may have to be a little easement area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you can't make that decision, it's not like a typical A and R, you have to put the buildings on that exist that are gonna be affected, and you have to show where the septic systems would be and where the wells are.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, so we sent that back to Mr. Beauregard, and he said, so Bill said, well, I could do an analysis, but this is what the cost would be. And then Beauregard was gonna take it back to his own guy, which is much better, he shouldn't be using our guy.
Right. Right.
But I do wanna pay Bill for the time he put in evaluating it for us, just out of our funds, it isn't very much, well, did he get a U of Bill?
Uh, no, he's, he called and he said he didn't have time to do it this month, so he'll do it next month.
Okay, but it wasn't much, it was like.
It was like four fifty total, almost.
Something like that, so we'll approve it next month, because I think sometimes things are very complicated, and, uh, it's, we can pay him for an hour or two to get to answers.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so when you, when that comes in, just put it on as an item for next time, so, so in a way, we're working through this, this pot of leftover stuff.
Absolutely.
New business, we got Cattisto signed, but Francois, if you wanted your signature, stop in to, stop in Monday, but, um, the places, you're gonna get that bill done.
Yes.
Um, oh, signing the contract with places, this is a, another, this is under, sort of matters un- anticipated by the chair and old business, I don't know where you fit it in. But here's, so, remember, we looked at this contract though, Murray said places had to have a contract with the board to provide services. Otherwise he couldn't get professional liability insurance, so we approved that contract, and we took a vote to send it to the town administrator.
Correct.
That we, to recommend the select board and the town administrator sign it.
Yep.
Um, so I thought that was kind of a done deal, and then he wrote back to Bill, well, actually, the planning board can sign it. And Bill's saying, hey, guys, I'm not doing any more work for you guys till this is signed, cause I'm, they're yanking my insurance unless it's signed. So we tried to straighten this out today, Mallory and I, and David said, we could sign it.
Yeah, just the chair.
But I, but I think we need another vote, that it says.
It's a vote.
Yeah, that said that to allow the, to vote for the, uh, chairman, you know, the chair to sign it, to, to approve it and vote for the chair to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so everybody understand, can you do that motion from that?
Yes.
Alright, then I'll sign it, it's not changed, oh, we have to vote, yes, all in favor?
We have to vote on it first.
All in favor? Yeah, of course. Aye.
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 Okay, and even though I'm signing it, I'm gonna vote aye too, I think, because we can't progress without his.
We're seeing the chair aye right there, versus aye.
Okay.
And, uh, how long is the contract?
It's revocable at will, thirty days or something.
Oh, okay.
Remember, it only works with what we send to him.
Right.
And we don't have, he doesn't have a monopoly or anything that could send it to anybody else, so the minute, if we're not satisfied with something.
Okay, but, but.
We can go to somebody, but at least it spells out his rates and what he's willing to do, and it.
Okay.
Um, and particularly his inspection part of it, which of course is the problem we're having with the ZBA, I mean, with the, the ZEO, right? Is, nobody spelled out enforcement, and he's, so we have to do that, cause there's no other way. Um, okay, and then another thing we got, and this is, um, is October eighteenth, I got this, just, just got this note, again, from, um, David. Saying October eighteenth is the meeting for, is it gonna be the town fall meeting? And he said, what do you want, do, are there any articles the planning board would like to put on this? So, um, I just beg some questions as far as I'm concerned, the three things we're working on are solar bylaw, which won't be ready. The marijuana bylaw, which, in a great revision, won't be ready, and the zone, result, can, uh, growth control.
Solar lottery.
That's not gonna be ready.
Bylaw, so, but, I had, I, I talked this over, Christopher's my new point man for the marijuana bylaw, cause he's got the time and then he's willing to do it. But it's a long process, so here's the question, uh, that I wanna raise with you all, we could do an amendment to what we have, knowing that it's an interim step. Um, and I guess it, it looks, it, it depends on how much you see the risk factor, but we could do some basics, leave what's in place and say, um, um, no marijuana establishments on lots, say, less than five acres, or less than whatever we pick up, and setbacks of at least a hundred from the property line, and that includes the fence. Just some basic, you know, ca- to prevent the kind of chaos we had, and to tell people, just don't go buy that lot in the neighborhood, I think you're gonna put a marijuana field on it, right? So, that question is, do you wanna do that, and if you do, so that's the first question, or do you think we can hang on till the annual town meeting and do it right?
Well, if somebody comes in and pulls a, and, they have a right to do it, if we put something at least in place, I don't have a problem putting something in temporaries to protect ourselves in the town.
Pass one.
That's kinda my feeling.
I'd rather have more than not enough, until the annual.
Well, um, I, I mean, I feel that way, cause I don't think there, I mean, people who have mari- put, people who have hall moratoriums in place for, and this wouldn't be a moratorium, this would be just some rules of the game. Um, so if we wanna do that, um, maybe we could, I, see, it is getting late, I don't have a lot else on here, but maybe we could spend a few minutes talking about it.
Well, can we.
But what do you feel, does everybody?
What else do we have to talk about before this, can we take care of Roland and then, just a few minutes, is that okay?
Okay, let's see, what else, yeah, yeah, let me look at, um, old business, okay, the, I've, um, the gravel pits I just told you about, I had this talk with Norman Brown, that says he's working cooperating with Mr. Wiggins, and so something may come of that, affordable housing.
Yeah, you said that, yeah.
I told you about the CPA tax title, that was once coming close, I talked about Habitat for Humanity, Master Plan, um,
Yeah. Yeah. And the master plan.
Though, uh, we were up to bylaws anyway, did we, did we hear from the, an AG yet? Not yet, okay, um, so that's where we were, the E, the EEA grant, I heard nothing, but it's very early in August, and she said late in August.
Okay.
The Cattisto extension, we had correspondence, I got correspondence from Whitney Freiberg about EDE, uh, which, they haven't met, cause they didn't get a quorum. I don't think, have you got a new?
I didn't, I didn't get any correspondence from her.
Ah, alright, I'll read you what she said if I, I read it out.
Uh, I know i- in the last agenda, they, um, they did have a bunch of stuff on the, um, the farm bylaw.
Yeah, she said, uh, good morning, Alice, I just wanted to update you on our ag accessory bylaw project. So this would be an accessory used to an agricultural, that's the shorthand, ag accessory. Uh, I emailed our committee June fourteenth with the new bylaw documents that I received from Rutland, so this is, just as a model, she was sending out. And subsequently emailed them bylaws for Bolton, uh, which were emailed to me from Mallory via Katie. I suspect that's Katie Young, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, I asked our members to review these and glean some ideas for our bylaw project to discuss in our meeting on July twenty-first. However, we were not able to have the July twenty-first meeting, because we did not have a quorum, which I only was informed of approximately one hour before the meeting was to start. I tried to reschedule the meeting for sometime this week, but only two members responded. This has been an ongoing problem, people volunteering to be on our committee but not making it a priority, very disappointing to those of us who have been consistent and committed to the EDC. So I reached out to find a solution to this continuing problem, it'll probably take some time, I'm aware this prob- problem is timely, so I'll reach out to each member, one to one, for their input. And start putting our recommendations together for those conversations, I think that's the best I can do for now.
Just to, uh, to clarify on the record, uh, I never got a message from her, uh, about that, other than the meeting being canceled.
Okay, well, I'll call her back, and I will let her know, I, I, that.
Cause I, uh, I was here for the meeting that night along with the representative from Community Cable, who, uh, was not informed of the meeting being canceled.
Yeah, I know you called me.
Uh, who had driven forty-five or fifty minutes to get here.
I know, I didn't mean to put you on a dysfunctional committee, if you'd like to trade with the CDC.
No, 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 I'm, I'm fine, I'm very interested in the mission.
I, uh, uh, CDC, C, uh, CPC.
CDC, they're far away.
Like, I'm getting real crazy.
Um.
Why would you say that?
No, I'm invested in the mission, I, I just, uh, I'm trying to get connected.
Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, well, there is, uh, speaking of, uh, uh, upcoming meetings, the, uh, CPA, um, did I get that right? Community Preservation Committee, CPC.
CPC, when are you two married?
I'm bad with, I'm bad with the, uh, what do you call those?
Acronyms.
It's a lot of letters.
Yeah, anyway, uh, they're meeting, they're me, they're, they're meeting next week, uh, there's two initiatives that have been proposed.
Alphabets.
I know one is to do something with the church, which ties in with the lady who was interested in the seventy acre, the seventy-two acre lot, is connected with that church. And she has sent it to me, but I haven't read the proposal, but they're hoping to go back, it is historic building, and there's no clarification of the, um, use of CPC money, I believe, for churches, if they're historic, I don't know, it's an issue.
So, which church are we talking about, one that existed?
The one, it, it's at the, the V where Williamsville Road splits off from, uh, sixty-eight, yeah, which is really an eye sore V, really nice.
Williamsburg Chapel, yeah. Oh, you mean the one right down at the end of the street?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, I don't know, it was, several years ago, it was on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And they actually can acquire to get some of the money even back from the state, it's like advancing the money and you get it refunded, so I'm interested in what they have to say and what the rest of that committee thinks. Anyway, so that's, what else do I have, um, the Bowie requesting for landscaping, we've got that, so, I'm, I'm at the second public comment, so if you wanna spend a few minutes talking about marijuana, we can do that.
Alright.
Does anybody wanna spend another, are you willing to make this a two-hour meeting, we could probably do this, if you, if you like that concept. We would have to come up with, Christopher and I talked about this a little bit, what, um, bearing in mind that a canopy of ten thousand square feet takes at least twenty thousand square feet to grow, which is half an acre, right? So, what would be the minimum lot size in a residential district that you could plant? We're allowed two tiers, the five thousand square foot tier and the ten thousand square foot tier. So, I know Ashburnham has a five acre limit for ten thousand, and Berry has a twenty acre limit. So that's kinda the range of the ones I looked at, but it's something.
Fortunately, most of our residential areas don't have a lot of available land, to actually even make that happen, but do we want one to be able to sneak through as to what happened up here?
Yeah.
Before we have, before we have our.
Yeah, that wasn't a very good lot.
Before we have our research done and our presentation for the June meeting.
Right.
So, my concern is trying to not make any large material changes, and I think if we were to look at and say, well, yeah, I think we can put in some protections here if we do five acres, I don't think we're making a material change to what the original bylaws intent were and where the voters were at. I think if we were to go up to twenty, it, it would become a constructive prohibition, and I think that that would be a change to what the, um, the original intent was with it.
Okay. Right.
And there's no issue with whatever we put in tonight, if we decide to do that, we can still change that, when we wanna change it in June with our presentation for town vote.
Yeah, I think, I think what Christopher's saying is, though, the way zoning works, it's supposed to be the vote of the town, it's not supposed to be edict of the board.
Correct. Oh, okay.
Which they would still have to vote even on the interim, honestly.
Right, so you're saying you have five acres is reasonable, but not twenty, not, not strictly with the twenty.
But.
Yeah, that, yeah, we, we wouldn't really, we wouldn't be making a huge modification if we were keeping it at five, whereas twenty would be, because it would affect, yeah, it would stop it, yeah.
Cause there's no twenty acre lots, if you're saying it's done.
Correct, well, there are some, but they would be okay then, but, for, but the, the only, the highest you can go in a residential is ten thousand square feet of canopy, so it's a quarter acre, right?
Yeah.
So a quarter acre in five.
Correct.
Right, now, I mean, I don't know whether, see, when I said Berry has twenty, they may allow, uh, you know, a bigger canopy. But anyway, okay, so let's say five acres and we leave their original, that's either for five thousand or ten thousand, you gotta have five a- five acres, okay, so then, there are no setbacks. Which makes, which is, which is why we now have a fence on the lot line that's five feet tall with razor wire around the top, right?
Right.
So, I guess maybe we change it to barbed wire, but anyway, I think, I think we need a setback, significant setback, especially in a residential district. So, again, um, Ashburnham's is a hundred on all sides, and two hundred if it abuts a residential zone, because it's not just limited to residential. And I don't think our setbacks have to be limited to residential, do they?
I don't know.
I mean, think about that, but.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that's reasonable, if you're gonna put up a five acre, I mean, yeah, that's a front yard, right?
Mm-hmm.
You gotta back it off the property line a hundred feet.
Same thing as that storage facility.
Yeah, anybody have a problem with that, we can put a hundred feet front back and.
They don't. Hmm, I think it's not reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, if you think of five acres and you're only gonna plant a quarter acre, cause that's all you can do with ten thousand square feet of canopy, or maybe, be generous, an, an acre of it. You still, with a setback shouldn't be a problem, right? So if we say a hundred feet, all sides, and that includes the fencing, right?
Is there enough, what do you mean?
Cause that was the other problem, is we do have setbacks, but it doesn't apply to fencing.
Right.
Right, so, including fencing.
Is there enough area to do all that, is that workable?
Is what?
Is that giving them enough land, which I believe it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a five acre parcel, parcel, unless you have wetlands, other, other problems involved with it, who knows, I don't know.
Yeah. But you can often put a fence through wetland, you just.
Well, what even mattered, yeah, that's true, the setback of the, the fence, like, it shouldn't matter, even white, you can do it there.
It's, I'd say, that was the main problem, is that people don't see a fence as a building, right?
Right.
So that's why we effectively had no setbacks.
Right.
Because the, the original concern that you expressed, I, I think summarizes it really well, because how it currently is under the framework. You could be on a two acre lot, put it right on your neighbor's line and be growing right there in the minimum lot, and it's completely permissible under our bylaw as it is, so by, by going up to the five acres and having the hundred foot setback. It takes care of just about, well, most of the issues that come up with that, uh, without having to go into making a ton of nuanced changes in the rules.
Okay, the que- the question is, though, with five acres though, and setbacks, you want it to apply in commercial too? I personally think it should.
Maybe, I thought that.
Well, if I had a restaurant right next door to where they built the pot farm, do you really want them growing a pot right next to your parking lot?
No, especially when it comes to growing season and, and you have the scent.
Yeah.
With the odors.
But the, but there are shops too, there are other uses, I mean, we have anything goes in commercial.
I, I'm just saying, what's the area, what if, what if it's right next door to the church?
Well.
Or the daycare, do you want that right next door, it's in a commercial area?
And we'd be starting with somebody already in non- compliance, you know, father.
Well, you could. You could, you, yeah, you could, you couldn't have those there.
Oh, I'm just saying, food for thought, maybe we should just, right now, for our temporary fix, include commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, until we can think about it more, yeah.
Just to protect themselves and get us a little knowledge and a little more experience, we can always put it forward on the June meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you have to have a public hearing, anyway, even for the simple thing.
Next time.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, um, so, I mean, those were the two main things, I do think, um, well, another common thing is, is clear cutting.
Mm-hmm.
So, a lot of town, towns say, well, you can't clear cut more than fifty percent of a lot, I don't know, do you want to address clear cutting?
Is there any other regulation in our bylaws that cover that?
No, because, I mean, that's one of the things that we have als- also been discussing with, there are some solar farms, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you're basically t- coming in and saying, well, we're repurposing this here from forest to, to solar, what's the environmental gain, right?
Right, right.
And so, I think if we look at it from this perspective, might be something very similar.
Okay.
So, if we could say, no, no clear cutting, no, no, you can't cut more than fifty percent of the lot, and you can't cut trees in the setbacks unless necessary for access, for this purpose.
And again, I would, I think it would behoove us to look at it, have somebody look at it professionally, once we imply, put down all these regulations. Is there enough area to do what you need to do, or have we cut it back too much, I don't know.
Well, I'll pencil it in, cause we have to have a hearing on anyway, we're very short time, actually, October, so, gonna have, we have, you know, um, and then,
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we are.
Um, you know, the issue that really hung us up was the water use, and, so I don't know, I'm not gonna do it right now, I'm just gonna say the others on my list, or do we wanna say anything about water use? Do we wanna say anything about greenhouses? Because greenhouses are allowed in agricultural districts.
Mm-hmm.
So somebody could put up a quarter acre greenhouse, and it wouldn't look like a regular tomato greenhouse, it'll be, be one of these, even though it's called an outdoor grow bylaw. So maybe, do you wanna allow greenhouses only in the commercial districts? even though it's called an outdoor grow bylaw, so maybe, do you wanna allow greenhouses only in the commercial districts? Or do we wanna allow, or do you wanna put a, greenhouses shall not exceed a certain size, or?
For me, I think that's part of the bigger bylaw change, and we should focus on the setbacks and the acre of five acres, and do that as the amendment,
Okay.
and then talk about those things for the big change in June.
It would at least get the greenhouse so it wasn't on the lot line, right?
Correct, that's my opinion anyways.
Yeah. Right.
You know, keep it simple, keep it the two amendments, and that'll protect people from having things built right next to their home until June, 'cause we're not talking about that much.
Okay.
And we don't have anybody in our crushes right now, nobody's coming in, so.
Correct, nobody's even come to us, exactly.
We still have, we, you still do remember, it is true that it's a special permit, right?
Right, you still have to.
So things like something out razor wire for, you know, there's a lot of stuff we can do with a special permit, but I don't.
Right. Yeah, and the water usage almost got that shut down last time, so we still have authority.
Yeah, we can do that too, okay. So I will just try to put something together that would read, as the amendment would read, there would be, um, the five acres and the ten and the hundred foot setbacks, and I'll tell David.
And the hundred foot setback, and that's nice and simple, easy to understand, and we can protect some people, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Right.
We're gonna have a hearing on it, we want it on the town.
I agree.
Sounds good.
The meeting in the fall for some protection.
Right.
And I think that protects us a lot better.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, excellent, okay.
And.
Chris, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I I agree with that, um, and as as much as we have the ability to to look at a lot of things, like the razor wire and the water usage, I think it's good for everybody to try to get some of that into the framework, so that people coming in and trying to set up a business, they they have a reasonable understanding ahead of time.
Right.
And they don't have to go through the whole process and be like, well, am I gonna get ninety days into this? And it's all gonna hang on one small issue with discretion on the board, with no real framework or guardrails on what, because it's a lot of money to get to the point where people are doing that, so.
Right, yeah, and there's there are support groups for marijuana growers, and I'm not judgmental, there just are.
Right.
That say which towns have friendly bylaws and which have no restrictions.
Right.
But we're like, uh, we got a target, you know, we have nothing.
Right.
So this at least helps us.
Well, I'm, in some ways, I'm happy we've had a little bit of experience in what we've done, so we have a little knowledge which which way to look.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, 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 and I hope they work, but.
But, and I just hope this all works out for everybody, but, uh, I think this helps us for the future too.
Right.
Um.
Right, all right, well, I'll put something together, so, Mallory, what am I forgetting, anything? I know, I always send Mall- Mallory notes.
Oh, you think it's a good one.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
But I don't see anything else, so, then our next meeting will be eight nineteen, is everybody gonna be around?
Take a look.
If we don't have anything that comes in, we might, because it is the end of the summer, but usually something does come in.
Alice, I actually have a day off for an appointment for one of my kids, so I can come in after, but.
I'm on vacation.
Oh, the day off?
That's in two weeks.
The day off, I would hate if it wasn't.
Okay. I mean, we may, if we don't have any, I mean, stuff moves along, right, so usually we gotta hold a date, but I might.
Have to come out for a day off.
I'm not available either.
Okay, so Bill can't make it, Mallory's off for the day.
And I'm likely to be out.
You're likely to be out too, do you wanna cancel that meeting, just call it if I need to?
Sounds like we have to, yeah, mm, sounds like we have to.
Sounds like a plan.
Can we push it back a week if we had to, would that be more durable for everybody?
I'll tell you what, we'll plan on canceling it, which means we.
That's why you're not gonna be here, right?
I would not be available the week after.
No.
We'd pick up the first, it isn't another five Thursday month, is it? Eighteenth?
The first, uh, no, it would be the second, uh, September.
Yeah, September second.
Okay, we'll plan a meeting September second, but you guys have to, if something really comes up that's time-sensitive,
Sure.
you have to check your emails from me, and I'll try to work it out, all right? Okay?
That works.
Okay.
Works for everybody?
Works.
All right, motion would.
Like to make a motion to adjourn, I just got a motion.
Oh, oh.
Not to pay the law in favor.
Aye.
Bye.
All right.
Okay, thanks, guys.